All right, seven o'clock. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent. I guess before we get to the announcements that are on the agenda, I just wanted to go with the announcement that we did declare a state of emergency here in Irvington today. The text reads, based on the current public health crisis related to COVID-19 virus, in anticipation of a significant threat to public safety pursuant to the New York State Executive Law, Article 2B, Session 24, I, Brian C. Smith, Mayor and Chief Executive of Village of Irvington, hereby declare a state of emergency effective at 1:00 p.m. on Monday, March 16, 2020, which will remain in effect until further notice. We've actually taken two executive orders so far. They both are effective tomorrow. The first one is to protect public staff. There will be no public access to the IK Benjamin Community Center, Senior Citizens Center, DPW offices, Water Department offices, Irvington Public Library, and the Village Hall, which includes the Village Administrator, Court Treasurer, Village Inspector, Theater and Justice Court, again, effective March 17, 2020. So it will remain in effect until further notice.
Brian, can I ask you real quick, when the senior center is included in that?
It is.
Oh, I didn't hear. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
So all Village buildings?
All Village buildings, yeah.
I didn't specifically list the nature center, but there's no stamp that's permanently posted there.
Right, so it's closed.
Except to squirrels.
They're allowed. They're exempt. Then, to protect visitors to our parks and reduce opportunities for gathering spots. The playground location in Matheson Park, the playground location in Station Road Park, and the playgrounds and basketball court located in Cedar Castle Park, be close to the public, used effective March 17, 2020. There's actually a recommendation.
It was a, it came up on a conference call with the Westbury County Health Department about the playground specifically. Yeah, and basketball courts were concerned as well.
So especially with the playgrounds, it's possible to continue sanitizing. You basically have to, every time a kid was on the slide, you'd have to have someone go down and do it again. And then secondly, it's just a place where more than, you know, too many children were, you know, congregating in one place. So it's a, it's a tough decision because without schools, obviously, kids need a place to go. But large groups of children together is not what we're looking for.
But the parks themselves, of course, are open.
Parks are open, yes. The walking paths are open, and you can walk around, but, you know, don't congregate too often.
No, I think that's smart. You definitely can walk and stay separate from other people. And the aqueduct is, the state parks are open?
Yes, all the parks have been very busy.
Rockefeller State Park is open and many, many acres.
Oh, one other announcement, from personal experience. If you're bringing your dogs to Irvington Woods or on the aqueduct, they have to be on a leash. My dog almost ate another dog today because luckily we had a gentle leader on my dog because, you know, it was a smaller dog, not a small dog, but my dog would have eaten it within half of it because there's off-leash. So just because your dog's friendly doesn't mean the other dogs are friendly, and it doesn't mean that people want to be jumped on by your dog.
This is my mantra, you know? Your dog is friendly, isn't it?
No, same way. But I always seem to have dogs that don't like other dogs. So please, if you're going to walk your dog, walk your dog on a leash. You're not supposed to be running wild, even in the woods. It's very simple. It's very simple, and it just seems to be something that we have a lot of...
We did discuss with the record department that there is a bigger parking lot at the nature center area, so there it's possible for people to go to the woods from two places, from the reservoir and from the nature center parking lot. So both of those, I mean, just in terms of outdoor spaces for people to go, you know, we just named, what, five that are within the walking distance?
I don't think we mentioned HZ Bond either, so that's a place you can go.
Yeah.
Which is beautiful.
Yeah.
Which is delicious.
That's really gorgeous. So you can get out there and walk around and, you know, stay away from other people and keep your dog on a leash. The other announcement we have is a check over $25,000 pursuant to our village's purchasing policy. This, the vendor was Pearl River Plumbing and Heating. It was for the firehouse two-year renovation. It's the final payment. It came from the capital fund, which was also from insurance proceeds involved. It was $102,981.27. And then we have Burelli Mechanical, which was IFT HVAC replacement, the capital fund for $29,715, which is half of the amount. Then we have the correspondence. First one is from Lori Regan, who forwarded her petition to keep Matheson Park, quote, "safe and private." She points out that there's now 322 signatures. She wanted to know the status of the discussions, which responded to tell her that they've been put on hold on Matheson Park for now. Then she also wanted to find out about if we are vulnerable, obviously, she's telling where we're vulnerable to losing federal funds under the Trump administration's policy because all the federal funds from sanctuary cities has been upheld. Did we provide her a list of the federal funds that we receive, which are all for projects? You know, we didn't, we don't feel that they're in any danger. And then she also wanted to know the immigration status of the two people involved in the murder of the River City Grill, the victim and the attacker. We again told her that the police department does not record immigration status on any of their reports, so we don't have that information. But the murderer is going to, he pleaded guilty, and is going to serve 17 years in prison, so he'll live with his resident in New York State for the next 17 years. The next letter, I think we actually did, we discussed most of this at the last work session.
Yeah.
From Peter Budary. It's about the Broadway, North Broadway mixed-use district. He had a bunch of questions, which we actually went, we went over, I believe we went over all these.
We did, yeah.
At the meeting, so he answered, I think, all of them. He was there, so we had a good discussion. Thank you for that again, Peter. And the last one's Ann Altman. In light of the recent advisories from the desk of the mayor and the school superintendent's office, as a community, we should be taking immediate measures to secure the health and safety of all of our residents and neighbors by demonstrating responsible care for themselves and great consideration for others. That is why, in the days directly following those memos, I was alarmed to see the Irvington Union Free High, the Irvington Union Free School District, high school campus, and Irvington DPW, and Station Road Tunnel using leaf debris mower, leaf debris blowers chewing clouds of particulate matter and exhausting the air during public health emergency. COVID-19 affects people with compromised immune systems and respiratory deficiencies. Therefore, it is irresponsible, reckless, and negligent for the town, school district, and commercial companies to continue this nonessential, counterproductive, and highly gloomy practice. And each debris blower should be immediately suspended indefinitely. I encourage this ASAP. That's your motto. Anyone else have announcements? I didn't ask that. There were too many things going on. There's no one in the audience, so we don't have to be publicly comment. Anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I got the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Should we be approving travel out of town at this point?
Sorry, I can't hear you.
My concern was whether we should be approving trial, approving, I can't even say the word.
Approving travel out of town.
At this point, for Village employees.
My guess is they're going to be using their judgment on that and cancel if it's, I'm guessing, what's the date of it? It's July, so.
Oh, July. I thought, right, sorry, it's much closer.
I'm assuming, yeah, obviously, if it's canceled, they won't spend the money, but I think if it's...
I just said that due to judgment, to see where we are at that point.
Yeah, exactly, because it's, that's going to be, I think that's a tipping point, so I'll say it. The intimation that the public hearing consider local augmenting the zoning code to create the recovery mixed-use district is suspended until further notice. And the public hearing consider local augmenting the Irvington Code to put limitations on parking of commercial vehicles is also suspended until further notice. Which brings us to approval of an intramunicipal agreement with the Town of Greenberg regarding the East Irvington Fire Protection District for 2020. Any big changes in this letter?
No, actually, the amounts are very similar and, you know, same, same agreement, same service that's being provided by the fire department to the East Irvington Fire District.
Well, I'd like to actually thank the Town of Greenberg for, you know, kind of being proactive this year and getting this done very quickly. So we didn't have to chase them down, I don't think, too much?
No.
No, this was, I think they actually brought it outside a meeting, a village officials' committee meeting, so I was very happy and thankful to the Town of Greenberg for taking care of this so quickly, so. I will go ahead and read. Whereas the Village of Irvington and Town of Greenberg have reached an agreement on the provision of fire, on the provision of fire protection services for the East Irvington Fire Protection District for the period of January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. Now whereas the payment due from the Town of Greenberg under set agreement is $113,012 for 2020, that is for being resolved, authorize the mayor execute intramunicipal agreement with the Town of Greenberg regarding the East Irvington Fire Protection District, subject to final review by the Village Attorney, and further resolved, authorize the court treasurer upon receipt of the payment from the Town of Greenberg to make a payment of $39,554 for 2020. The Irvington Fire Company accords with the terms and conditions of the intramunicipal agreements. I'll make the motion, because I'm thinking on the second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. You need to sign one, Larry?
I have to get signature copies ready, but I know I have errors, but...
No worries.
Yeah.
Next up is approval of contract 2020-05 for professional services with Kim, Kim Kidley?
Kim Lee Horn.
Kidley Horn?
Yeah.
Another guy. I'll go through.
So first of all, what I handed you there is, is the actual scope of work, which is not terribly extensive. It's a, it's a small contract right now because we have to do some upfront work to really better understand what the scope is for the, for this area. So, but to describe the process, the, we did issue a request for qualifications. We received a total of eight responses from professional firms. We were able to narrow down that list after a review of the subcommittee, which is Connie and Janice and myself. And we were able to narrow that down to four. We interviewed the four firms and very quickly narrowed that down to two and eventually one, which is Kim Lee Horn. So at this point, the, what we're asking for your approval on is the initial task of establishing a community engagement plan. The fee is a lump sum of $2,900. The, the plan is really to decide how it is we're going to reach the various users of this area, how we're going to evaluate what the issues are down there, try to better determine what the issues are, and then establish a more concrete scope of, of the actual project. So that's, this is really just a, you can call it a task one, phase one, whatever you want to call it, and that's all this is now. Future phases, obviously, would be, come back in front of you and be approved for approval. That's it. Interesting also to note that the timing of the work is, is going to be delayed because there's really, there's no realistic representation of what that area is in terms of traffic and usage and all of that with the, with the commuting and, and traffic numbers way down at this point. So we don't know how long that'll, that'll be the case, but whenever, whenever we get back to some sense of normalcy, we'll, we'll try to get this work done, but it really is a victim of incredibly poor timing.
But it sounds like at least the first couple of phases can move forward.
Some things can happen. They can, they can start to put together, you know, the, the ideas of how they want to go about this, but then to actually go about it and start surveying and, you know, interviewing on the street, whatever the plan is, it's meaningless at this point, yeah.
You can't see the traffic flow because there's no traffic.
Yeah.
It's perfect.
And you can't talk to anyone because no one wants to talk to you.
Well, that's true, yeah.
Well, approach people in a hazmat suit.
Yeah, it's, it's really miserable timing.
I am excited about this project, and I think it's, it's great to have it going forward. And, you know, I think it's something I think has been kind of long overdue. I think it was one of those things where it just seemed like such a big project that you didn't know where to start, so now we're starting.
We're going to ask some professionals to tell us.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, the, I mean, for, for those people that have been following it, they probably know that the Main Street streetscape plan made reference to that part of the village. We're calling it the Astor Gateway, but, you know, someone else might call it the Buckout Astor Train Station.
Transportation Center, whatever.
Intermodal, you could, but that's the area that hasn't been dealt with from the original plan of the, the streetscape. So I think we're even going to try to think of a better name for it so people know what, what it is.
South Astor Mixed Use District.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I'm ready for it.
It has to do not just with commuters, it has to do with...
You don't want to have the transportation hub to be downtown.
I oppose, yeah.
It's, you know, it's pedestrians abuse during...
Exactly, that's never been used before. I'm sorry, I'm just sorry.
I, I, I missed the banter, but it's, so it's also...
I'm going through crazy for being home.
What happens to the kids going to the library in the middle of the day when commuters have little interest in that area. So it's, it's not narrowly connected just to commuters. It's the aesthetics of that area, the, the one-way, two-way, turning, not turning, all those questions, one affects the other. So it's the beginning of that process. I think a lot of people will benefit from it being more, I don't know.
Having better flow.
A better flow, if that's the right word. Flow, good.
So the civic engagement plan is really the scoping document, it sounds like.
It will be the plan on how to...
How to do it.
How to get to the scoping document.
Right. Yeah, plan for how to, yeah.
The process.
In other words, where, how are we going to figure out what the scope is? Well, we want to reach this group of people in this manner, you know, using these methods. So that, that's what this plan is all about. It's very, it's a very limited window. And then, you know, the data that's gathered from that research will then better inform what the scope should be. So it's really a one step back a little bit. That's why the amount is not, is not so earth-shattering here. Certainly, the next, the next phase of planning, which maybe eventually leads to engineering, would, would be much more substantial.
It's like the first half of the first phase.
Right.
So we're going to look at it.
That discussion and a very small resolution. Solve to approve contract 2020-05 with Kim Lee Horn for planning and traffic consulting services and authorize the Village Administrator to execute said contract. I'll make the motion for it in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
A tender budget review.
Well, I'll just start off by saying that we're in a really very good position to start this budget off with, and I think the best way to look at it is from actually the last page forward instead of starting in the front. There we go. It asked me to do a fund balance projection. Well, I think these past couple of weeks have maybe changed things up in the area of sales tax with the decrease of the oil prices and economic activity for the next quarter that we're in. So it'd be all of, you know, I have my January numbers, they're not bad, but, you know, we have February, March, April, and May. So the other thing is, I don't think we'll see much additional revenue from Recreation Department or from the theater as well. But fortunately, on those sides of the equation, they have expenses that will also be lower. So let's say, well, Recreation may not have then the expenses for those programs like the baseball and other things like that. So those two should equal out. But let's say a week or two ago, I would have said to forecast about $250,000 over the revenues budgeted, but now I would really be more conservative and say $150,000 over the budgeted amounts. And that's after, we also spent $175,000, we offset the budget with $175,000 of fund balance, and also during the year, appropriate $100,000 for capital projects. So other areas, there've been ups and downs. A court was less revenue, some other areas were less revenue, but we did really well in interest income, which I was able to get some CDs at 2% and...
Not get that anymore.
I know. So those will be, you know, yielding the 2% until December of next year, which is a nice thing, yeah.
Staffing.
Yeah.
Treasurer over here, he's a...
Not lucky. Jumped on a good rate. Anyway, so in other areas, we do have, you know, a lot of revenues that are surpassing. Building Department up until now has done also, you know, well for the year. So I think it's comfortable to look at it and think we'll have about $150,000 on the revenue side that will add to our fund balance. The other side of the equation is what will happen with expenditures. I went through there, through them all. The only problematic area really is overtime in the police department. I don't know what the next couple of payrolls will be, but it could be about as much as $250,000 in the red.
Because of sickness or because of extended deployment?
No, because staffing shortages due to sickness and also due to the two retirements during which time they pursue new recruits for those individuals, which I'm unconsciously done.
So it was not done for public safety, and it's not an issue of...
Increased patrol.
Thinking of some sort of increased public safety requirement?
No, no, it's really staff, it's a staffing issue.
Maybe not as deep, but that's what it looks like. It could, you know, anyway, so however, we have some real other, you know, positives in our expenditures. We'll have a surplus in health insurance of about $270,000. That was really because we did not get an increase on January 1 of this year. So that will affect five months of the current budget that we're in. So that was an unexpected...
It's a rarity.
It's a rarity, absolutely. Retirement, we'll have the surplus of $100,000, surcharges, take into account what I have already, it'll give us about another $40,000 in that budget line. Looking at some other areas, like what do you take into account Recreation? We'll probably not spend as much as they have budgeted because of the programs. I could see spring the expenses under the budget by about $600,000 in total. So we're seeing...
So the fund balance is going to grow nicely.
So the fund balance is in a good position right now, even with everything going on. Some of those figures are already locked in, like retirement, medical.
Yeah, because, I mean, I think, you know, to me now with kind of the world changing so quickly in, in a, how to say, in less than a month, probably, probably about two weeks, you know, it almost feels, it reminds me back in the days of the crisis when, you know, 2008, 2009, where you worried about people being able to pay their mortgages and pay their taxes and all those types of things, all of a sudden, you know, we're, we're already at point 8.7, which is pretty low, but, you know, I think to be kind of a flat year-over-year tax rate is what we're kind of looking for to not put another burden on, on people. And we're also lucky that our, our water budget's doing well, so we're not going to increase water rates either, you know, so I think that we're not dramatically. So, you know, I think that, I think that's kind of the message we need to send right now, when you have, you know, I mean, I've heard in some of these conference calls I've been on, people worrying about, you know, people being able to pay their, their, their town...
They bill taxes.
Yeah, the property taxes in general, you know, they're just coming due next month. So it's, you know, it's, it's become dire very quickly, and it doesn't seem like, we definitely haven't turned the corner and say things are looking better now. I think we're still in the early days of the kind of down cycle, so I think having a tight budget this year is prudent and necessary, so.
I do think though, I do think that we're going to need to look in April at a couple of the revenue items. We made certain assumptions about the mortgage tax, which actually worked around, we were pessimistic about it, but I think, I think the opposite is true. Pessimistic thinking that there would be less finance, less economic activity, but when the rates then drop dramatically, the refinancing is clearly in a, in a boom, so.
Well, actually, in turn to the next page, those are revenues.
No, no, wait a minute. I'm not suggesting, what I'm saying, we need more time to figure out, because then on the negative side, the sales tax. And it's not just sales tax from the economic activity, it was even just initially the sales tax from the reduction in gas prices, because the gas sales tax is actually what drives a lot of the county activities, so.
We save money on the other side for not spending the gas.
Yeah, right. Well, unfortunately, that was...
Individuals. Yeah, I know. That's okay, yeah.
So it remains to be discussed, I think, in April when we have hopefully more information, we'll see.
Do we have any, it doesn't sound like we've had anybody yet who's come saying they can't pay their taxes or they can't pay their utility bills, water bills, whatever.
No, it's way too early, no. Our bill goes out in June.
Okay.
So we don't have a collection right now. The water tax, water bills are relatively, you know, relatively low this time of year. So we haven't had, we've had a good collection rate so far. So that was a good segue into the revenues, which is the next page going forward. You can see a rundown of the revenue changes. We're looking at, right now, an increase of revenues in the amount of $311,000. We're talking about the sales tax. The number we've listed here is the one we were given by the state when they first increased the sales tax, so.
That may need to go down.
That may need to go down, yeah.
That's not a problem.
They originally gave us a number of $343,000. And I, and I tried to get more information, was including just, I think that was just a result of the sales tax, but if general sales are lower, people are not buying cars, whatever else, that'll hold it down.
Not even in restaurants.
Yeah, right. So that's a pretty serious number to, you know, look at. You don't want to get that wrong.
Toilet paper tax, you're going to admit that.
Appreciate it.
We've increased the cable, I will, well, I can go through them very fast. Cable franchise fees, it was previously in the cable fund, now it's represented in the general fund, slight increase of $10,000 there. Rec fees, as Joe Orchino went over with you, was a projection downward.
Is that including everything that's been canceled so far?
No, this is for next year. He was feeling next year's revenues would not be as strong.
Okay, okay, right.
Yeah, I think you specifically mentioned youth baseball, that was one of the programs. We talked about that, but...
Right. I remember that, yeah.
No, this doesn't reflect current...
Current activities.
Current activity, which...
Yeah, it's where we are.
Yeah, I mean...
Like, it could be no camp, I, who knows, I mean...
Right. And, and our, our current policy that's being communicated is that the intention is to make up the classes or the programs that happen to be missed right now, but obviously, the longer this goes on, the less of an opportunity there'll be.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense at some point.
And then there will be refunds, so, but that's, it's going to be the cost of doing business at this point.
But also the, listen, in terms of expenses, are all of the part-time help already hired for these classes, or do they, how much in advance are they...
No, I think there's, there's a good number of them are, if they don't work, they don't get paid in terms of the destruction.
I mean, that's good and bad, but it's good for the budget and bad for the folks expecting it, but...
Right.
Okay, just want to let you know that camp, any revenues that have been received, those are really put aside for next year's revenues. So even if we give refunds for teenscape and everything, it will not affect the budget that we're currently in. You can see the fire protection has increased, that reflects a new contract you just passed. Snore removal also reflects a new state contract, there's an increase there. We look at cell tower revenue, we felt comfortable, I spelled rental wrong, reedle, anyway, something like that. Cell tower rentals up $15,000. You know, Larry and I analyzed them, it's interesting, because some of them have been merged with other cell tower companies, so eventually they may decide its redundancy, but until then, we'll see a modest increase.
Yeah, the networks aren't merged yet, for sure.
For sure, but they, they may be trying to hold positions for their antenna.
Yeah, so, there's no way for us to really anticipate that unless you're really connected into the industry, but I think the, the types of money that we're talking about here are not super significant if we find out later that Sprint Network finally merged with a T-Mobile network, and we lose $20,000 of revenue, that's...
That's fine, it's a small, they're relatively small.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the old variety lease is a big, is a big lease.
Just a big one, the AT&amp;T lease.
Right.
Okay, we've increased the budget on both sides for the building, the purchase of 86 Main Street. We projected $40,000 in revenue... Main Street. We projected $40,000 in revenue and then projected $40,000 in expenditure, just to keep it a budget neutral, not knowing what to anticipate.
Revenues being current residents?
Building permits, a modest increase of $10,000. Street opening permits, a modest increase because of the change in the fee schedule. Fines and forfeitures, we've offset that by $40,000. We just see the volume of tickets have not been, you know, generated. We reduced the prosecutor's line to offset that in the court fund. And then lastly, the mortgage tax, well, who knows now with the interest rates at zero.
Yeah, I think that, well, they were basically, the refunds will certainly be strong, but the mortgage, sales of homes and new mortgages, probably not. So.
Keep it flatter.
Yeah, I don't know.
Keep the way it is.
Yeah. But we're going to get that table.
Yeah. Expenditures, what I did here is I recapped all the expenditures. So it's, you didn't really review court, but I added the court one here. And the only real change was a decrease in the salary lines. I believe they're replacing the assistant court attendant with a part-time, part-time person. Prosecutors, slightly less because we think there'll be less activity. General government support, that includes anti-fishing program, disaster recovery for IT.
And I just tell you, I think fishing is misspelled.
It's with a P.
It's a PH.
PH.
He's not an IT, he's a light word.
They are testing us.
We clicked on it.
There could be anti-fishing, too.
It could be, I know, exactly. Maybe something new, I don't know. Anyway, insurance, we've been very fortunate that insurance has been relatively leveled. It's a slight increase over last year's premium, about a 3% increase over last year's premium. There's a very small increase there. Then we have our DPW requests that in the books you have, you know, more specific information on the requests.
Could you remind me, I don't remember why that's seemingly high.
The really large ones were that we were accelerating our plan for paving. It was to, instead of borrowing, to incorporate that into our operating fund. And we were planning to put in $30,000.
$60,000.
But then we put, we were planning to do 30, but put in the 60. Because we thought it was perhaps a good year to.
But there's still another $110,000, so that's just a small component.
So $60,000 of the 169 was for, was for paving. Yeah, I can look at the more detail, you know, if you want.
I'm just be interested what other large item there is in there, is there?
I can get it, you know.
Just for a second.
Okay. There was a request for additional part-time help for just under $30,000. And let me pass it over to you. If you like your books, I could distribute them because I do have them here.
No, I'm just looking at what's salary-related overtime. Just nothing related.
It's nothing to do with the CSCA, no, except in contingency.
Okay, there's, are you okay? I don't see any other major, beyond salary level type stuff that. Thank you.
You're welcome. The police request was $100,000. Recreation and park, $97,000. Theater was $20,000. Library, $36. We decreased planning board. It's really just a function of reevaluating the billing, the escrow billing. How that works is when people are in front of the board, they post an escrow and it is billed out and then we rebuild it at a slight markup to, anyway. So in analyzing prior year, the revenues received, we felt that we could decrease the expense side and the revenue side was, was good. So this is pretty much in proportion to the expense for those billings and the revenue received on the other side. We have the 86 Main Street, $40,000. Retirement, I'm projecting an increase of about $67,000. We've been fortunate that up until now, the retirement rates have been very level or slightly decreased. It's more a function of increased salaries. We'll see how the market does and the effect of that in the term. But for next year, those rates are set. So we see our way clear on it. Social Security, a slight increase, reflects just increases in general salaries. Workers' comp, very fortunate there. I was presented last week with an opportunity to lock in for two years, a two-year at the same rate. And it looked like a good opportunity because it would decrease this year's workers' comp and then lock it in for next year.
Nice.
So I figured, you know, in the environment we're in of uncertainty, I didn't see any downside. And that was before everything really fell apart, you know. There you go. So I think it was a good, I think it was a good opportunity that the village can take advantage of. Health insurance, an increase of $166,000. And it really represents the increase we would experience next year, next January. And I put in what historical amounts have been, about 8%.
So it doesn't kick in until next January?
Well, the increase, right. So it's projecting the increase. And also, we have a number of retirements, potential retirements. So it's budgeting for replacements of those people. When people first retire, you know, you're on our policy as retirees. So it's additional policy for the new hires. So there's, I put in enough to, so it wouldn't be a surprise to the budget. And debt service is actually seeing a decrease due to the structuring of the debt service. So the net increase, when you offset the revenues with the expenditures, the levy is up $211,000. So then you can flip to the preceding page. This is our tax cap worksheet. You just may want to go pretty much near the bottom. When you put in how much the levy would need to be, we'll be under the tax cap by $467,000. So the whole amount we had available to us was $678,000. We're using $211,000, that's the levy, leaving us the 467. And then you had asked me how much of that could be rolled over to subsequent budgets. And the formula is 1.5% of the tax levy limit. And it is $225,000. So you would be leaving something on the table, so to speak. And then lastly would be your, the first page. And this is giving you the total expenditures, revenues. I'm assuming here that we still have $175,000 of surplus being appropriated, which clearly is doable for next year. And it gives a slight increase then of just over six cents per thousand of assessed value. And the percent increase is under 1%. .87.
Good work. I think we're in good shape. So remind me of the timing. We have to have a public hearing on it or adopt it by the 20th?
Well, a public hearing has to, has to be between April 1st and April 20th.
20th is my mind.
Yeah. And so we have it scheduled for April 6th. We'll see how that goes. You have until May 1st to adopt it, but.
Yeah.
Maybe there's some changes.
Larry and I were talking about.
State law because.
The, you know, the only thing that's really pressing right now is the budget. But, you know, it's probably doable. I mean, we've done a lot of the work, thankfully. We've had hearings, or we've had presentations. So, you know, I think it's doable. You know, we're going to work on the technology. It seems like Larry's coming up with a good plan for that, so.
Sorry, we were talking about the budget. What are we saying? The technology for the meetings here?
Correct. Yeah. So we're just saying, like, you know, for the next month, if we wanted to cancel all of our meetings, the biggest thing that would be hindering that is the budget. Because that's the thing that's really pressing. Most of our other items aren't necessarily super time-sensitive, but the budget is.
And to be perfectly honest, although the statutory deadline for a budget is May 1st, the practical deadline is really May 20th, or in that range. Because you need a tax warrant, you need a warrant to start collecting taxes. So if you don't have a warrant to collect taxes.
I don't have the legal authority.
Then your tax collections get delayed. And that's where the issue comes in. Whether we meet a statutory deadline is really of little consequence to the functioning of the village.
Put me in jail.
No. And when you think about it.
Nobody else, anyway.
I mean, that was, that was the norm up until 10 years ago with the state budget. So you know, if we adopt it.
That's very true.
So.
I forgot about that.
Well, I don't think it's going to come to that. I think that the practical deadlines are actually further out than the statutory ones.
What do we have to do? We have to do a final review or just a public hearing?
Just a public hearing.
Because this is the final review.
Yes.
This is the tentative budget and there won't be any changes to this budget until the hearing is held. And then at that point, you can make changes to that, to this budget.
Do you have to vote to accept the tentative budget tonight or not?
No. No, it just happens.
So do we expect people to, I just don't remember this. It's not that often we get people coming in to talk about the budget.
Right.
Is it? I mean.
It depends on the year. I mean, it depends on what you're doing.
Yeah, when we've cut things, people come in and express displeasure.
But every single department presentation has been in a public meeting.
Yes.
So people have been, has been involved in the entire process up until this phase.
Yes. Yeah. Look, if you, depending on how things go in the coming weeks, I don't think it would be that difficult to take your electronic version, to circulate and publicize it as needed, make copies available anywhere, you know, whatever public building might, may or may not be open at that point. But, you know, but we can publicize it. We can get help from the, from the press to publicize it for us as well. And then if the hearing happens to be held using conference, people can join that meeting and raise their hand in the conference. That's one of the features of the video conference. And you could get feedback through electronic means or you can very clearly state in your publicity, please send your comments in ahead of the meeting, whether it's phone calls to the village administrator, the mayor, whatever, or whether it's an email, which most people use, whatever it is, you know. The point is, is I think we can manage to get enough publicity out there so that people have an opportunity to look at it and decide if they'll comment. And by the time you show up in April, if you've heard not anything from anyone, you don't have much of a public hearing to worry about. I mean, you know, it's not worth it.
So I just have to say that I know, I was just on a Zoom conference earlier, in mid-last week, where they had like almost 600 people on it. And, you know, it's quite robust and it's easy to load on your laptop.
More.
I don't know, I had never tried it on.
And it's, I was going to say, it's like, we also do, Larry, where, you know, like, you and I should go up here, you know, obviously, we wouldn't want the public to come necessarily. But if we want to make one place available, we can almost set it up like this, you know, like.
You can.
I mean, we could figure out, we could put it on there, we could figure out the details. But, you know, three is that way. If someone doesn't have access to a computer and they can't go to the library, obviously, and they want to sit in the back of this room and have their voice heard, then two of us are here and we're pretty socially distant now, so.
But we're not the only ones in this spot, right? It's every single municipality. So I think I would suspect as the weeks unfold, we'll, there'll be some consensus about what's the appropriate way to handle this in this climate.
Right. I mean, I've seen, as of right now, I've seen more cancellations than anything.
Cancellations of budget?
Of meetings. No, of meetings right now. But, you know, as you move into April, the meetings, in the case of the budget, become a little bit more important. And by then, people have their technology together and tested and ready to, ready to do it electronically, is my guess. But we'll see. But it can work. I don't, I'm not, I'm not worried about, you know, somehow taking an action and the community saying we didn't know anything about it. I mean, I think.
That's funny.
I think we can do, you know, we can, we can take it and make an effort to get the word out.
I thought of an announcement that, just when you're talking about technology, and that's the census. I got mine in the mail. I bet others did as well. And the expectation is to do it on, on your computer. And then there was always the expectation that people would go to a library. Now, obviously, the library isn't available. I know institutions bigger than us here in this room, you know, will have alternative ways for people to think about how to do this. But I'm just bringing it up about how important it is to everybody in Westchester, sales tax and other kinds of things, represent, representatives in Congress and many things depend on counting everybody.
Did Greenberg shut their library?
I don't know for sure.
I know Yonkers shut, right?
I think it's, I think that was part of the governor's talk today.
I'm just trying to think of who might have.
If they said bars and restaurants, you'd think they'd said libraries, too. Anyway, I mean, there, there are ways to deal with this.
Well, restaurants are a takeout.
It certainly presents a challenge. You know, we had, we had different things planned in the coming weeks. We had the county lined up to come do a presentation over, probably over some food with the senior citizens.
On the census.
On the census.
Yeah, right, exactly.
April 1st or April 2nd, if it was a date.
Yep.
You know, that probably won't happen. We had plans to invite people into the library with people assisting.
Right.
In the responses, not answering for them, but helping them.
Right, that's a pain. That's too bad.
That's not happening either. I mean, I.
Unless you set up a computer kiosk on the street.
I mean, there are, there would surely be ways to do this.
Such a bizarre, yeah, it's just, well, anyway, we're, fortunately, I realize April 1st is technically census day, but the, there is a good window of time to try to get people together and do this.
Can't they have until end of July?
I mean, you can imagine.
But they'll, they'll have visits.
People outside, somebody has a computer here and there's a line with six feet between each person that needs help. And you have a little station right outside on Ferris Street.
I bet you're going to open up your basement with your computer.
That would be one way.
We wouldn't even be in a position to organize something like that right now, to be honest with you. I mean, practically speaking, maybe in a couple of weeks, maybe in a month, I don't know. But the bottom line is the people, there's plenty of time for people to respond, even though we were pushing to get people to do it early. One of the reasons we were pushing or one of the enticements to push people was to make sure that they didn't have someone come knocking on their door, not because of what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, but just.
But just in general, who wants to be bothered with that?
Exactly.
Answer it, then you won't be bothered.
Exactly, yeah.
So those don't happen until, I think, May and beyond, you know, for the people who haven't answered any of them.
Hey, the census is coming. You're going to have to do your quarantine.
Yeah, we've done, we have an email that's been done once. We were planning on some reminders, but there's been so much other.
Yeah, I had a couple pop up.
I saw a great ad with an. I saw a great ad with an elderly lady, a public service ad, and she's doing solitaire on her computer, like, that may be the one thing she does, and then somebody comes over and says, you know, like, you can do the census, and she does it. It's really, really easy. I mean, it's.
I saw that ad.
So, it's, I thought that was very effective, like, you don't have to be afraid of screwing it up, you, you can't, I mean, it's, it's really.
But it's pretty straightforward.
It's pretty straightforward, and some of those count as senior citizens here, and we can do it.
Yeah, I, it's, it's been on my mind, for sure.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, there just isn't any way to address it right now, not in any coherent way, so.
I'm just trying to, for all those people listening, to encourage them to try to do it themselves, if they are able.
One thing we might think about doing, if it looks like people do need help, is have a call in time, where people can call, and someone will answer the questions, how do you fill out these forms, I don't know if that would be helpful.
With our reduced staff.
I'm answering your colleague here.
A help line.
If we have some sort of call-in availability of people who can help open the phone.
Yeah.
Okay, open the census, I don't know what this question.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think we can do that, we, and we can get some guidance from the county in terms of, you know.
Yeah, that might not even be a village function.
Yeah, no, no.
Right, I was wondering.
And answer your questions correctly and all that, so.
It asks me, help, census help line, already.
Say it again?
Oh, of course.
Census help line.
Yeah, some people are encouraged, or much more easily call a local, which is fine. We're, we're ready to do all that.
Yeah, I know, I know. We were, we were right on top of it, but.
Anyone, you know.
Okay.
Well, does anybody have any, trusty liaison reports?
No.
Actually, I do.
Oh, you do.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to point out to a lot of people, to people, that a lot of the land use boards, like the planning board and so forth, ARB, will have a very reduced schedule, if at all, in terms of which applications they are going to require applicants to be in person. And so I think the best thing to suggest is to actually look online at the posted agendas for the particular meeting, to see, one, what's on the agenda, it may be a non-existent agenda at a particular, or very limited, or, two, it might get to the point where the boards are actually in, whatever.
Virtual.
Not even meeting at this point, they might be in suspension for a while.
Yeah, we were, we were waiting for the, today was the filing deadline for ARB, for example. There might be one case on there, we have to look at it and see whether we're even having a meeting, so.
So everything is online on the village website, or will be, it's under the calendar, you can see particular boards and get their agendas for a particular session. And that was all I wanted to point out, was just.
I, I don't have anything.
Village administrators report?
I don't have a report tonight.
Clerk Treasurer?
We don't have one.
We're getting started.
No public comment? Asha, remind everybody about census.
Uh, yeah, we'll put that here.
And figure out about Zoom, or.
That's tough, mine. But that will make your motion adjourned if I can have a second. All in favor?